The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting of the Starkville Board of Alderman will now come to order. Please rise for the saying and pledge allegiance to be followed by brief moments of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have before you a copy of the written agenda? Are there any proposed provisions to the written agenda? Alderman Vaughn?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move upon the mayor business. Item B to consent.
Okay. That is the consideration of approval for temporary event signs for the horse park.
Yes, sir.
Item 9B on page two. Is there any objection to moving that to the consent agenda? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change on your agenda. Alderman Vaughn?
Bold business. I would like to move B to consent.
Okay. That is item B, the approval of the Starkville School District budget to the consent agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection to moving that item to the consent agenda? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Did you have an objection?
No, sir. Will we still hear the public hearing?
Yes. Yes, I would assume y'all still wanted to hear from Ms. Cooe.
Yes.
So seeing no objection, Ms. Cooe, that item has been placed on consent agenda, but we'll keep your public appearance as scheduled so you can brief the board on things going on with the school district. Alderman Vaughn?
Also E and G, move to the consent, please.
That is items 10E and 10G, the consideration of the approval of the Bulldog Bash special event request. And item G, the consideration of the appointment to the pre-advisory board. And what is the name?
Chris Godwin.
Chris?
Chris with a K.
What's the last name?
G O D W I N.
All right.
Mayor, I have some questions about whether E is ready for approval. I need to air those out, so.
Okay. All right. Alderman Vaughn? Do you wish to amend the proposed revision? City Attorney said he'd like for E to not be on consent, but that's a board call. Do you still want to propose that one?
And I'll tell you my reasoning, Alderman Vaughn. In the packet that we, the application packet that we gave them, there's an indemnification agreement, and that indemnification agreement has not been signed yet.
Okay, we'll go with the city attorney.
Okay. So your proposed revision is to place item G on the consent agenda, and that is to appoint Chris Godwin to the pre-advisory board. Is that the proposed revision?
That's it.
Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Please note that item 10G has been placed on the consent agenda. Further proposed revisions. Are there any further proposed provisions to the agenda? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed provisions? All right. Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order.
Some move.
Motion's been made by Alderman Corey to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye. Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. You have revised the consent agenda. Is there any objection to the approval of the revised consent agenda? Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? The consent agenda has been approved as well. You have no minutes this evening, and I have no introductory comments. Are there any introductory comments from the members of the board? Any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from the members of the board? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make comment may do so by coming forward and introducing yourself, and you will be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Do we have any citizens wishing to make comment? Any citizen comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Maybe I want to lie. But I would just like to say I'm George Giesek, and again, I'm coming before the board, and I'm coming before you with some pressing problems again. Pressing problems are, we have had something at Sutter School that's going on. We don't know what's going on. The public not, you know, advised, and we know that the police are looking into it. Once again, I'd like to say if we had a curfew, a lot of this stuff still wouldn't happen in the city. And I'm not going to keep coming back, you know, and saying anything, because if you notice or not notice, I don't even attend the meetings anymore. I don't, because they're not, you know, centralized enough for me to know what's going on. If I can't come up here, my ideas are not presented. I don't think nobody can tell me that we don't need a curfew here in Starkville. One study, right. One study at all, right. But I also would like to come to tell you, I thank my aldermen also, Ward Six, I would like to thank, I would like to thank Alderman Perkins for what he's doing, what he's standing up for. And that, why that, I mean the hospital fund, and I also mean going out to the horse park. Horse park was supposed to be paid off, you know, paying off for their sales. Okay, we're into, what, about the, six, six time, we should have been paying for itself about now. We're taking money, we're using money that we really don't have for the revenue, you know, but we need to look at this. Next time, we need to look careful at the budget. Not only, you know, get up and decide the budget for the city, but get some citizens in on it also. Talk to them about the different things that go on. But I would just like to thank you all for listening to me, and again, I say, yes, we do need a curfew here in Starkville, this is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giesek. Any further citizen comment? Do we have any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances. And we have two public appearances scheduled tonight. The first is by Superintendent Judy Cooe on the budget presentation. Your budget has been approved, but I think everybody would like to hear from you. And congratulations on recent test scores and the big win over West Point. We're all excited.
We appreciate those comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and present the budget. I've presented you with three sheets, and I will go through them as briefly as possible. The first is a comparison of millage rates from 95 to 2011. Those years with an asterisk at the bottom were years that we had a bond issue. You see that we had one in 95 and also one in 2007. The two asterisks indicate a time of reassessments. Reassessments were done in 96, '03, and this year. This year's reassessments dropped our total operational mills by about three mills. If you look at those first two columns, the district maintenance and the VOTEC, that is our total operational millage. Fifty-five mills is the cap for school districts. Currently, ours is not there, and we still have more mills, as you see, left before we reach the cap. Other areas that are represented on that front sheet are our general obligation bonds, and you can see that that bond debt is going down. Also, our limited tax note, the amount left on a debt of a 10-year note that the district had. And of the general obligation bond, the 95, 96 was for the bond issue, and it'll be retired in 2015, 2016. On the next page, you see how we calculated our millage. Those are the tax levy calculations. Estimates from the Tax Collector's Office indicated about 258 million, 50,000 in total of assessed value in Starkville. After we had our homestead calculations and collection estimates, in other words, deducting those out, once they were applied, the assessed value was estimated to be about 244 million. The highlighted section below that tells you how we break down that millage as far as the district used. And that refers back to this millage that was on the front sheet. The last three sheets are our combined budgets, is our combined budget, I should say. And the combined budget for Starkville School District is 58,852,631 dollars and seventeen cents. Please do not ask me how I'm spending the seventeen cents. It is accounted for, however. A breakdown of funds from each reporting category or each accounting category is listed for you there. Our total expenditures are listed there. The deficit you see at the bottom of the first page continues over into the second page. You see at that point that are, those are obligated expenses. In other words, expenses we have obligated for, and then as the money comes into the school district from sources, then that money is taken account of there, in there. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any questions or comments?
I've got one.
Alderman Davis?
Ms. Cooe, I do appreciate everything you're doing. Is there, I know there's been recent discussion in this boardroom, and I know several people have asked me about it, too. Is, considering that the first Tuesday of every month is our board meeting, and the first Tuesday of every month is y'all's board meeting, is there any consideration or way that we could see if we could shift the date? If I understand it correctly, ours is mandated by state statute in which, the date in which we move. Could there be consideration or thought put in when y'all meet so that there couldn't be an overlap at those times?
That would be, that would have to be considered by my board, my bosses, so I can certainly take that to them, your request.
Okay.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Are there any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Cooe.
All right, thank you.
Next public presentation is from the Student Association for Permission for Street Closure and In Kind Services for Bulldog Bash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman. I have a quick handout that I'll pass out if it's not in your packet, or it might be a little updated. It includes the list of the road closures, as well as an updated map for the two stages of the event. First, I'll introduce everybody. This is Rhett Hobart, the Vice President for the Student Association, and Meredith Sledge, and Brad Hollinger, who are the co-directors for this year's Bulldog Bash. We're very excited to be here tonight, and very excited to say that a lot of things about this year's Bulldog Bash are going to be bigger than ever before. For example, the stage and different things like that, so.
All right. I know we've got some questions from the city attorney, so let's start with you, Chris, and then we'll hear from the board.
There were two legal issues that I saw with y'all's packet, and one, I saw you, that you presented the declaration page for the insurance policy, that the requirement was to get the whole policy to the city prior to the event. Have you dropped the whole policy off with Mr. Griffin?
Exactly. I forgot to announce that at the beginning. Yes, we dropped that off with Mr. Griffin when we got rid of it.
Okay. And Mr. Sellers, tell me about y'all's position about not signing the indemnification agreement yet.
University Council and the Procurements and Contracts Office at Mississippi State University has told us that it is not legal for us to sign that indemnification on behalf of the university and the Student Association.
Who'd you talk to in University Council?
That Mr. Burrows, Bill Burrows, and Student Affairs went through University Council.
And Mr. Griffin, it's my understanding that the indemnification agreement was signed last year, right?
Yes, sir, it was. One, two, three, the State President, and.
The other signature is the Secretary for the Student Association.
Yeah, this is the Executive Secretary. I can't read the signature.
And I spoke to Mr. Burrows right after I saw that sheet of paper, and he said it was illegal for them to do that last year, and it would be illegal for us to do it this year.
Okay. I would sure like to see some law on that area before I could advise my client that they should waive the indemnification agreement.
Okay.
So if Mr. Burrows could get me that, I'd love to look at it.
Okay.
Further questions, comments by the members of the board?
To that effect, I've got a question. I mean, if sometimes, if just somebody randomly gets harmed down there, would the city be held liable for any kind of, any kind of injury?
That's what the indemnification does. It states that MSU will indemnify Starkville in those events, and so it's a very important provision, and I would advise you guys not to act tonight before we flesh that all the way out.
This is in as next Friday. Yeah, we do have a Tuesday board meeting. Would it be best if we direct you to talk directly with Mr. Guest?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
And University Council, so that we can solidify that and not go through Bill or Nina Thomas?
Sure, I think, I think the issue is resolvable. I just want to hear where they're coming from and make sure I understand the hook for their non-signing.
Well, if I understand correctly, are we, you probably and we probably as a board would not want to agree upon this contract if an indemnification clause was not signed.
Correct.
So could we approve the contract, or could we approve the permit tonight contingent upon the signing of the indemnification clause?
My recommendation would be that since we've got another meeting before, before the event, then we wait and handle this issue and then do everything next Tuesday.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with the city attorney, and we don't have to have a motion, but I move that this matter be placed on the agenda for the next meetings in concurrence with the city attorney comments.
And I'd like to, if we could, direct you to talk directly with Mr. Guest, so that we can see, and go ahead and resolve that as soon as possible. And I guess as far as the permit is concerned, there's nothing in the way of the sequencing of things that have to happen. With, I mean, with formal approval happening Tuesday with this resolved, us not approving this formally tonight won't hinder anything in the way of preparing for next Friday.
It should not hold anything back.
Okay, good.
Further questions, comments by the members of the board?
While I've got y'all here, one thing that we, you know, when we do these special event applications, is I've kind of taken a notice of the trash pickup, and y'all are probably the best organization that's come before us. I saw last year I was there afterwards, and y'all had sixty to a hundred people. You got on here for the city, doing trash, will y'all be doing a sweep afterwards?
We will. We have a committee, and all of our, we have over 600 people that sign up to be a part of the Student Association, and we will assign each group a different road, a different area, and get that cleaned up to the best of our ability.
Alderman Perkins, were you making a motion earlier?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have to do anything. Let me just draw that. We can just put it on the agenda for next Tuesday, and the city attorney can do what it needs to do.
Okay, yeah. I had taken it as not a motion. Now, y'all do have the action item that's under board business. That's item 10E. Y'all can deal with that now, or we can deal with it when we get to item 10E.
I would just like to table this until Tuesday, and if we need to take specific action at that time.
Would you like to postpone consideration of item 10E till Tuesday, September?
I see no further discussion needed.
Is it 21st?
Just postpone it. Postpone it to Tuesday, with the understanding.
So is that a motion to postpone the consideration of the approval for Bulldog Bash special event and the request for the donation of in-kind services to the September 21st, 2010 meeting?
Some.
Motion been made by Alderman Davis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Davis, do you wish to speak on merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. And I think to give y'all some direction on where to go from here, and board, please correct me if I misstate something. The board is comfortable with the entirety of your proposal with the exception of issues over the indemnification agreement. Our council will get with the university council, and hopefully something can be reconciled by Tuesday so that that will be approved. But board, please step in if you see it differently. I don't see anything else hanging up the permit request. Any further questions or comments from the board?
I do want to say job well done on changing the stage. I know we've been at this for a couple of years now. Y'all have worked hard on it. We've been out there several times, and whatever you've done is good, and I'm looking forward to it. The only problem is, and maybe y'all can help us out, you know, our mayor rented the top floor of the Blue Building last year because that was his house. So we had the best perspective in the whole Cotton District. So if y'all could find a way to where we all could get on the top floor and look at it.
And you all have done an excellent job planning this this year. I, of course, Thomas did what you do many, many years ago, and I like to think of myself as part of the history of this event, and I just would like to note to all of you that you have done all of it. Very, very proud.
Did you sign the indemnification?
As a question.
No, no, this process has advanced quite a bit from what we dealt with.
That's a handshake deal.
Yeah. It was much different.
One more issue aside note. It says SPD has no barricades. If y'all, y'all have taken care of that.
We have provided them in the past from the university, and we're prepared to provide those events.
Since y'all have the public floor, are there any other thoughts about this event you'd like to share?
We're just excited about it, like, moving the stage, one of the main reasons we're moving the stage is because this year's stage is going to be twice as big as last year with a Grammy award-winning artist. They require certain things, and one of those is a larger playing area and more sound, more light, more of an exciting atmosphere. And so we're just excited that we're going to have that this year, and we're looking forward to a great event. We appreciate all the help from the city thus far.
And it's probably important to note, because I know this has been issued in the past, an issue in the past, you know, historically, and this is just clarification up here, the stage has faced east.
Right.
And so obviously, all the sound was sent toward the university for the most part. Now we're changing the stage to where it's facing west, so I would imagine the sound downtown and throughout the community will be a little louder than it has been in the past. So just a word to put that out there.
Thank you.
Because I know in the past, I know in the past that has been, there have been discussions about that.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that carries us to mayor's business, and the one matter remaining under mayor's business that was not placed on consent is the consideration of the approval of a contract amendment with Gary Schaefer for the architectural services for the proposed municipal complex. Chris and I have been working with Mr. Schaefer and his legal counsel for a little more than a month, I suppose now, on getting an amendment to Gary's contract worked out that is one that Chris is legally comfortable with and we think takes us where we need to go with the architectural services for the municipal complex. Now, of course, as we've discussed before, Mr. Schaefer has been the architect of record on this project for, coming up on a decade now, since the project was initially passed to him by Brinkley Sargent, who did the initial feasibility study. His contract is still in existence from that initial process. So what we've been trying to do is update the contract and incorporate a feasibility study, which is the vehicle that the board has chosen to use to get us to a point where we have a project to pitch. Of course, the feasibility study is what the Citizens Committee that we have sat will be working with, and what I've asked Mr. Schaefer is if he would be willing to take us through that process as a part of his standard architectural services on the project at no additional charge. And he has said that he would. And the discussions that we've had over the last month have been trying to get us to the point where we have a legal document that works and gets us there. And of course, that was a significant step, I thought, for us, because we need a feasibility study on this project to tell us where we are and get us something that is ready for the community to consider. But of course, we have no budget to build that feasibility study. So I was enthusiastic that Mr. Schaefer was willing to serve as the expertise on that pursuant to his standard arrangement as architect on the project. What I'd like to do, to brief the board on what you got before you, and I apologize for things being developed really up through this afternoon on the project. The city attorney has been working with Mr. Schaefer's attorney intensively over the past five to six days to get final portions of this proposed amendment worked out so that there is an agreeable relationship that's there for both parties. What I'd like, I guess how I'd like to proceed with this, is I'd like for the city attorney to walk you through what you've got and how we arrived at that. And there's a couple of decisions, should the board choose to go with the amendment, that the board would still have to make. They're kind of open-ended questions that the board needs to provide an answer on. And then after that, I would like Gary to kind of explain, first of all, how the feasibility study process might work and what his role would be pursuant to this arrangement. And then also, I'd like for you to talk a little bit about the discretionary matters that the board would be looking at, and those are specifically the type of fee structure that Gary would work on. He is comfortable working on the same fee structure that he's had during the contract. I'm not sure, given the option that we have available, that that is the best fee structure for him to work on. So there's a couple of options that I'd like him to explain to you a little bit. And also, I'd like for him to explain what reimbursable expenses would be associated with the project. Chris?
There are three main legal documents that I'm going to be referencing that you may want to put your hands on to have the best understanding of the deal. And one is a form contract, and it's Section 1. It has the headings 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 down the page. The other main document is another form contract, but it's just Section 2, and those headings are 2.1, 2.2 going down the page. And then the third important document is the document that is titled Contract Amendment. The two form contracts, Section 1 and Section 2, were entered into by Mr. Schaefer and the city in January of 2004 for Section 1, and December of 2003 for Section 2. And as the mayor said, what we're doing is we're updating these contracts to get them up to date to the status of the project. And there's been a lot of back and forth between me and council for Schaefer and Associates about what the terms are going to be. There were several terms in the form contracts that I deemed to be legal deal breakers, and Schaefer and Associates has graciously struck those provisions. And so I don't see any legal hurdles right now. And so we're really down to two main issues. And these issues aren't legal issues, so I'm not going to be able to advise you which way to go on them, but the mayor did ask me to frame them up, since I've been working on the whole thing for the past month and have this all in the front of my brain. The first provision is in the first section of the form contract, and it is on page 10 of that contract. And the heading is compensation, and the section that I'm referring to is numbered Now, when this contract was first entered into by the city and Schaefer and Associates, the deal was that Schaefer and Associates would get 6.5% of the construction cost of the project, just a 6.5% flat fee, separate and distinct from some reimbursable expenses that Mr. Schaefer is going to talk about. In our negotiations, he's brought up another potential method of compensation, and it's based on the Mississippi Building Bureau, is that right?
Bureau of Buildings.
Bureau of Buildings. And he sent an email on that that you should also have in front of you. It's the email from September 7th that's sent to Parker slash Lynn. Now, what this Bureau of Building method is, it's a logarithm formula, and it's a sliding scale. And it's based on the idea that the bigger the project, the less percentage the architect gets, and the smaller the project, the more percentage the architect gets. And Mr. Schaefer's run the numbers. And Mr. Schaefer's run the numbers under this logarithm method and let me just say, this is the method used for all state buildings, buildings built at MSU, Ole Miss, Southern Miss and other state buildings. He's run the numbers on this on a $5 million project under this logarithm Bureau of Building method. And for a $5 million project, renovation project, his fee would be 7.21, which would be higher than the 6.5 flat fee. However, on a new building that was $5 million, his fee would be 6.27, which would be lower than the flat fee of 6.5. And so the scale slides based on amount of the project and based on whether it's a renovation or new construction. Renovation, the percentage goes higher, the more the project is, the percentage goes lower, the percentage goes lower for new construction. One other thing to factor in on that method is that one of the potential options, as I understand, it could be a series of buildings, but it's not just one building, it's one, two or three building. In that case, it's my understanding that this logarithm method would allow Mr. Schaefer to make more money because the percentages would be higher based on each separate building. So those are the two fee methods. So the first thing you'll have to decide tonight, if you want to approve the amendments to the contract, is what fee method are you traveling under? Do you have a question, Holman?
Yes, I'm just, I'm on the municipal complex committee. I mean, is this going to be more of a renovation slash new building or is this going to be all new construction?
It's completely unknown at this point. That, that's what you'll get the conceptual of through the feasibility study. Once that citizen committee comes out with a, a recommendation of how they think the city can meet its needs, then you've got a concept of whether it's going to be new construction, whether it's going to be renovated construction or a combination of both. And the, looking at that being the case in the scenario where we are, that's why I favor the Bureau of Buildings option. That and it's a, it's a standard that's known. This is something that's a sophisticated measure that's been developed by the state to give you an architectural fee that is the fairest possible fee for, for the work that's done. With an unknown project, a figure like 6% could, could turn out to be better than what the Bureau of Building schedule is or it could turn out to be worse. And I think you're best off sticking with a, with a credible and established standard that, that tells you where you are.
To further work with this math, has the committee come up with any type of estimated cost of construction?
No, and those are all things that will come out of the feasibility study.
I know I'm jumping ahead, but we'll be on the subject. Also, with, with that contract though, I guess it's an old contract that limits construction cost around 5.5 million and 142,000. I mean, is that something that if we approve that tonight, that the total cost of estimated construction is five and a half million or can that be adjusted?
No, that was, that was the original building project.
Right.
This amendment would, would replace that language with the, the project that, that is determined in the feasibility study and you would apply the fee schedule of either 6.5% of that or the Bureau of Buildings logarithmic method of determining what the architectural fee would be.
One other distinction between those two fee methods, on the contract amendment document on page one, at the bottom of the page, Mr. Schaefer shows the contractors and their expenses that would be assumed by Schaefer and Associates. Mechanical engineer expenses, structural engineer expenses and electrical engineer expenses will all be part of Mr. Schaefer's fee under whichever fee method we go, flat fee of 6.5% or the logarithm method. Now, there's a difference with respect to Pritchard Engineering. He's going to hire Mr. Pritchard to be his engineer and under the Bureau method, it is standard, the logarithm method, it's standard for those fees to also be part of Gary's fee. In other words, he assumes those fees.
Right.
If it's the flat fixed fee of 6.5%, Schaefer and Associates takes the position that they want to pass Pritchard Engineering expenses on to the city as part of the other reimbursable expenses. And that gets me to, to issue number two, which is reimbursable expenses. If you'll stay with section one of the contract, the form contract, and if you go to page number nine of that contract, under section 1.3.9.2, there's a list of what are called reimbursable expenses and these are expenses that would fall outside of either the 6.5% flat fee or outside of the logarithm formula. These are expenses that Schaefer and Associates would pass along to the city of Starville. In the negotiating process, the city of Starville has requested that Schaefer and Associates put a cap on these reimbursable expenses, a not to exceed number. And Schaefer and Associates has taken the position that, that's an untenable position for them based on the risk they would have to assume and I think Mr. Schaefer's going to address that. So there's two issues tonight. Number one, which fee structure, 6.5% or the logarithm method? And number two, whether the city wants to hold the line on a cap, a not to exceed number on reimbursable expenses.
Okay. And Mr. Schaefer, would you like to walk through how the feasibility study would work and issues related to the fee structure and reimbursable?
I can and thank you, board. And Chris did a great job of explaining that.
Correct me if I was wrong or anything.
That was excellent. I'd like to start with a few first words about the feasibility study because the discussion regarding the fee option will only be relevant if there's actual work that comes out of the feasibility study. So if, if nothing comes out of this, then it doesn't matter what, what the fee was anyhow. So I believe that the feasibility study is the best vehicle for establishing planning, site and cost options for the future police, court and city hall functions. To accomplish this study, we will need to work with individuals, small groups and a committee. We're fortunate that we currently have a needs assessment that was produced for the police department and the municipal court. Recently, we have also completed a needs assessment for the city hall functions. By increasing the involvement during the research phase of the study, you can anticipate a strong sense of ownership when the results are presented. This process helps individuals understand the need to prioritize and budget resource, need to prioritize and budgeting resources in an orderly manner. The feasibility study will produce a document that you will have, the research information on the areas studied, different sites, and also on design options. Along with this, we will produce a cost estimate for each of these options. So with this information, you should feel comfortable with the direction for the municipal complex and you should also be able to pursue funding opportunities that are in line with your goals. Any questions or on feasibility?
Alderman Carter?
Excuse the low prior background. What was it that Brinkley Sargent did? Was that a feasibility?
Needs assessment.
Needs assessment. What is the difference?
The needs assessment establishes how many rooms you need for each activity. So they interviewed the police and they needed X number of rooms. They interviewed the court, they needed X number of rooms and established the size. We completed that, we ran a needs assessment for city hall and that established the needs that they'll have for the number of rooms. When you know how many rooms you need and how big they are, then you can sort of apply a cost per square foot estimate and that helps establish the budget. So the needs assessment established the functional requirements and the amount of money. Now, it's not, it's irrelevant what site you go on. Basically, you'll need the same number of rooms regardless of the site. So the needs assessment was produced. The thing that I think is most interesting on that document, it's almost 10 years old and if you track what they projected 10 years from when they did it, I believe the police force is exactly at those numbers. So they did an excellent job on identifying what our needs were at the time and projected out into the future. And we have that done already, so the committee will be able to take that information and start to work with it.
And reject for another 10 years?
And, and we have agreed to push this out. When we get involved with that, we will push these numbers out, those other 10 years to catch up to the future that we're going to be trying to design for.
You just push the numbers out based on population and the size of the police force as it increases in the courts and everything?
Yes.
Further questions or comments on the feasibility study?
All right.
Seeing no more.
Then I'd like to talk about the fee options. As Chris said, currently we're under contract with fixed fee of 6.5% of the construction cost. And again, this would be for work that would come out of the feasibility study. This fee was established by the previous administration because the scope of the work and the budget for the justice complex was set. We already knew those. We had a task, specific task to, at hand. So we were able to calculate what the architecture and engineering fees would be, assuming that that project was going to come in on budget and that's where that $5 million figure came from. And as I said, we're happy to continue with, with that contract if the mayor and board would be interested in just continuing that one. But the other option for fee structures is a method used by the Bureau of Building and this institution owns all public buildings in Mississippi. Every project that we do at Mississippi State, Ole Miss, Delta State, they're all under the exact same fee schedule because the state has that set. And so one could argue that your building is very similar to these types of buildings and should therefore use the same fee schedule. It's a logarithmic scale, which accounts for complexity of the project, renovation versus new, and it also is dealing with the amount of the dollars. The higher the budget, the lower the architect's fee and vice versa. So because we don't know the scope of the work or the budget at this time, the Bureau fee schedule would accurately represent the fee relative to the complexity of the designed work and the associated cost of the work. Using this logarithmic scale fee structure, we feel is, is fair for the owner and fair for the architect and I think the state also agrees because it's their schedule. So for example, if the feasibility study suggested that two or three small buildings on different sites, some new, some renovation, the fee for this work would be established by looking at the Bureau fee schedule and it would be clearly defined. And if the feasibility study suggested that one large new building on a single site was what you wanted to do, then the fee would be different, but again, it would be established by the Bureau fee schedule. And so I think it's very defensible and easy for us all to agree that that is what the fee would be. And so until that is established with feasibility study and until the board decides and, and the public decides on a direction, we really can't exactly say what the future will be. So that's why the recommendation was to do this. The majority of our contracts, we do almost all education work in our practice and we're working with universities and schools and they all use the Bureau fee schedule. So, but we are happy to do whatever the board would like and I'm happy to answer any questions relative to that if you have any.
Are there any questions or comments relative to the fee schedule?
Does that have any, whether you go with the Bureau of Building 7.21 for the previous price or if you go with the six and a half that you've agreed to, how does that impact the reimbursable expenses? Does it matter either way or is that a totally inseparable?
Reimbursable expenses are exactly that and I think the easy way to think about reimbursable expenses and why architects have a difficult time putting a cap on it, reimbursable expenses are your expenses. They're the cost, if, if you would like a model, if you would like to have a special study done on a certain area or when a project is being bid, we have to provide drawings to all contractors that request to put a bid in on the drawings. So if 30 contractors ask to bid your project, we need 30 sets of drawings. If 70 contractors ask to bid, then you need 70. So you see why the architect couldn't possibly be responsible for that because we can't say, we're only going to give it to the first 10 contractors because we don't want to keep producing all these drawings. We have to make that available to the public so that expense is a direct expense that would need to come back to you all. And so that's, that's, our hesitation is really in those areas. These are your expenses that we, we don't have control over. And therefore, whatever that expense is, the printing cost, we will show you the cost of the printing and send you that invoice and then ask to be reimbursed first for that amount, we'll pay the printing company. So there's no markup on that, but on the other hand, those costs are associated with the owner and not with the architect. The feasibility study should have very little expense associated with it. We will have, depending on the size of the committee, the amount of reproduction we'll have to do for getting the documents produced or if we're looking at different sites and we need maps done and things and we've got X number of people, we'll run those prints and then we would be looking for that reimbursable expense. But we don't have any other associated fees with feasibility study, just the production of material. And when we need to hand you a report, we need 15 copies of that report, we would then send you the reimbursable expense for those 15 copies. So you should be able to always see where those expenses were.
And the ballpark figure that we've talked before on the reimbursables associated with the feasibility study is in the neighborhood of $5,000.
Or less, we would believe, yes.
So you're not talking about, I guess, major expenditures there. It will, for, for the most part, be a, a feasibility study without cost because what you, you, you could be paying for in other circumstances is you would pay for the time of, of the consultants that you brought in to take you through the feasibility study.
But to clarify, the reason, the reimbursable expenses apply both to the feasibility study and the overall contract project, right?
That's, that's correct, but the significant reimbursable expenses really don't kick in until, the biggest, single biggest cost is the cost of producing the drawings so the contractors can bid on them. And I've got a bid opening tomorrow on a little project, I have 14 contractors bidding, just a little project and, you know, we needed to produce a tremendous number of drawings just because they all needed them. And so, so those, that's probably where the biggest cost would lie.
And one other point of clarification, in the negotiation process, Mr. Schaefer agreed to take on the risk of seeing the feasibility study through with the possibility that the project wouldn't make, that the bond wouldn't float. And in that case, you walk away from the deal, right, and, and don't get paid because you're assuming that risk?
Why, hang around for another 10 years to do it again?
Just want to make sure we had that understood.
Hopefully not.
Alderman Davis?
Having worked in this field, I, I don't, I think it's incredibly difficult for us to assume, the variability of this thing is tremendous. You know, we have no idea what this feasibility study will produce. And I think because of that, I think it would be incredibly difficult and short-sighted to say that we want a fee structure set and move forward with a contract that has a cap of any time type on reimbursable, reimbursable expenses. Because, I mean, as Gary's talking about here, I mean, it's, there's, there's no way in which we can see and foresee what the next year will hold and what this committee will determine and how those things will move forward contractually with, like you said. So I had some questions earlier, but those, they've all been answered. So I'm going to make a motion. I move approval of the contract with Schaefer and Associates for Architectural Services for the proposed City of Starville Municipal Complex with compensation based on the Bureau of Buildings fee schedule.
Motion has been made by Alderman Davis to approve of the contract with Schaefer and Associates for Architectural Services for the proposed City of Starville Municipal Complex with compensation based on the Bureau of Buildings fee schedule. Alderman Davis, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Is there a second? Seeing no second, motion dies for lack of second.
Let me add something here before another motion hits the table. If another motion is made for approval in any kind of form, there needs to be an extra condition on that motion that, that the approval is conditioned upon the addition of an indemn- condition on that motion that the approval is conditioned upon the addition of an indemnification clause agreed upon by the city attorney and counsel for Mr. Schaefer. I talked to counsel for Mr. Schaefer about that today. We're going to work on that language, and so, that condition just needs to be attached to any future motion.
Alderman, Court.
I just wanted to comment. I had almost said something while we were approving our agenda, and that was in regards to this item. I actually thought it was really good for us to go ahead and discuss this because it is very important. I had some concerns about taking actual action tonight. The only reason I did was because, you know, our packet was a single page, placeholder, basically, in regards to this item. But, at the table tonight, when I sat down, was over 30 pages of documentation, including the original contract with, you know, sections crossed out, comments added, options for payment, contract amendments. And I think it's very important, but I just felt like it would be beneficial to have the opportunity to sit down and really read over and process all this. So, I hope the board might consider the possibility of taking this item up, say, on a meeting on Tuesday. That's just...
Would you like to make a motion to postpone consideration until Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made by Alderman Cory to postpone the consideration of the approval of the contract amendment with Gary Schaefer for Architectural Services for the proposed municipal complex until Tuesday, September 21st, 2010. Alderman Cory, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Cory, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, thanks.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all of whom in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. And, Mr. Schaefer, you are welcome to come back to this on the 21st. I'll try to gauge if there's any questions, and we need that discussion again on Tuesday. If not, we appreciate your time tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
All right. That will move us to board business. And the first matter on the agenda for board consideration tonight is the adoption of the municipal budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011 to include increasing the tax levy by .45 mils from 19.55 mils to 20 mils. Alderman Vaughn?
I'd just like to recognize, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate if the board would include the $5,000 outside contribution to the budget for Smithwell Tutoring Corporation. They had it.
Okay. Mayor, I might ask to be recused from this matter.
Alderman Cory?
And also, before I leave the room, ask the city attorney for advice on board business. Item C should also be recused for sanitation rates as it's a budgetary item?
To be on the safe side.
Yeah. I'll recuse myself of both board business A and C.
Okay. We'll give Alderman Cory a moment to exit the room. And let me, I guess, briefly speak to that recommendation. If you do it tonight, and y'all may be able to redline your budget where you could amend it, one thing everybody's got to be aware of is you have to pass a budget that's in balance. Now, if the budget passes without that $5,000 item in there, that doesn't mean that it doesn't get funded, because one of the things you do have in your budget is you have a contingency fund where you could take that up and fund it out of contingency at a subsequent meeting. Alderman Davis?
I move approval to adopt the municipal budget for the fiscal year 2010, 2011 to include increasing the tax levy by .45 mils from 19.55 mils to 20 mils.
Alderman Davis has made a motion to approve the adoption of the municipal budget for the fiscal year 2010, 2011 to include increasing the tax levy by .45 mils from 19.55 mils to 20 mils. Alderman Davis, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Sistruck. Alderman Davis, do you wish to speak on the merits of your motion?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Court?
I was just going to say, Mr. Vaughn, or Alderman Vaughn, given what you said earlier, would you be interested in potentially making an amendment to that?
Yes.
And we're in discussion on the motion to approve the budget. Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, sir. I'd like to amend that $5,000 to outside contribution to the budget for Smithwell Tutoring Corporation.
All right. Alderman Vaughn has made a motion to amend Alderman Davis's motion, which is for approval of the budget, to add a line item of $5,000 in an outside contribution for Smithwell's tutoring. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
It's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Cory. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Alderman Sistruck?
I'm not opposed at all to considering this. I'd really prefer to consider it as a separate issue and fund it out of the contingency fund if that's the will of the board, only because it's a fairly technical process to go back through and make sure we get all the account numbers balanced and that sort of thing. That would just be my preference for how to handle it. And certainly, I'm not opposed to putting it on the agenda for next Tuesday night if that would work for you, Mr. Vaughn.
Stay with the amendment I made.
Further discussion?
Is... Isn't this a... Is this a private business? Is this the one that came in and asked to give a...
Is that?
Can we fund any other private business? Or is there anything? Just wondering.
Who are those? Who are the other?
Well, you fund, I guess, private nonprofits, certainly, GTPDD, the horse park.
Is this a nonprofit?
I don't know whether they're for profit or not. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote on Alderman Vaughn's motion, which is to amend the motion on the budget to include $5,000 for Smithwell's tutoring. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain on Alderman Vaughn's motion as the city clerk calls your name.
I actually have a comment.
Wait, we got to vote first.
Alderman Sistruck?
Abstain.
Alderman Parker?
Nay.
Alderman Cory? Yea. Alderman Davis?
Abstain.
Alderman Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Three, three, and two abstentions.
Yeah. The abstentions will go with the three in favor.
I'll get three passes.
So, by a vote of three in favor with one against and two abstentions, this measure passes. We'll go back into discussion on the original motion, which is Alderman Davis's motion to pass the budget, which is now amended to include $5,000 for...
And it's now out of balance, so where do we take that from?
How can y'all handle that?
Well, we will take it from, if she tells us to take it from contingency, if this board tells us to take it from contingency, wherever this board...
You may want to clarify that with a motion, just so that gives them the authority to go back in and balance up.
May I make a motion to amend Mr. Davis's motion to move that the city clerk modify the budget as presented to include the $5,000 outside contribution and to keep the budget in balance by taking that from the contingency fund.
Alderman Sistruck has made a motion to direct the city clerk to balance the budget by taking the $5,000 to Smithwell's tutoring from the contingency fund. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Cory. Alderman Sistruck, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
I mean, it's not that I would not have been for it on Tuesday night. I just, based on the 10-minute presentation they gave to us, I'm not comfortable... I mean, it's passed, so it's a moot point now. We don't know if they're profit, not profit. That's just a major concern for me, that we're giving $5,000 to somebody, and we don't really know, based on 10-minute presentation that they gave to us. It's just... But, anyway.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote on Alderman Sistruck's motion, which is to move the... to take the $5,000 that will go into the Smithwell's tutoring line from the contingency fund. All of whom in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. We'll move back into discussion on Alderman Davis's motion, which is now twice amended to the sum of the amendments is to take $5,000 from contingency and put it in a line for Smithwell's tutoring. Discussion on the main motion. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Question. Can I abstain from a vote that I made the motion on? Just clarification.
Yeah. We voted against it.
Yeah. Just didn't know if that was a...
What are we...
Going against something I made a motion on?
It's just kind of like...
Were we voting on the actual budget then?
This motion is on the budget as a whole, for clarification.
With the amendment of the $5,000 outside...
With the amendment of the $5,000. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name. And this is the motion as amended on the 2010, 2011 budget that includes a tax levy of 20 mils.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Davis?
Yea.
Alderman Cory?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Nay.
Alderman Sistruck?
Yea.
The vote is three in favor with three against. That means I need to break the tie, and I vote yea. So, with the mayor breaking the tie, measure passes by a vote of four in favor and three against. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of approving the amendment to the rate resolution for the sanitation rates as authorized by ordinance 2008-1. Discussion? Alderman Sistruck?
I move approval of the amendment as presented in our packet to the rate resolution for sanitation rates as authorized by ordinance 2008-01.
Alderman Sistruck has made a motion to approve of the amendment as presented in the packet to the rate resolution for sanitation rates as authorized by ordinance 2008-1. Alderman Sistruck, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Davis. Alderman Sistruck, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Matt, be recognized.
You may. Alderman Perkins?
Just for the public's information, I would like for there to be some mention as to what the business sanitation rates are going to increase to. There has only, to my recollection, been mentioned about the monthly residential rates being increased from $10.50 per month to $13 per month. And I'd like for the business community to know in case that has not been mentioned. But, I think there's something in proposal as to the increase rate for businesses. So, if someone could indicate that to the public as to what the increase is going to be to the businesses, I would appreciate it.
Ms. Boyd, would you like to outline the proposed rate increases?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. As per the conversation, the memo that I gave to you all, sanitation fees has not been changed since 2002. In regarding to Alderman Perkins's question, since we had not changed since 2002, 1575 was the original commercial rate fee. We changed that to $20 per month. That is $4... Oh, that's $4.25 more for commercial. And I'm asking that to justify the $13 that we're paying for the residential, and the businesses, which we only have 728, should be paying $20 per month.
And to be clear, these are the figures that Ms. Boyd has prepared to accommodate the change in her program to a sanitation and environmental services program.
Mr. Mayor, one question. City clerk, let me just ask you, but I think I'm clear on this. Based upon, and just informational purposes, based upon your experience and training and knowledge, and as a city clerk, and based upon your certification, can the city... Well, do you know whether or not that the city can increase sanitation fees to generate extra money with the money being used just to cover the services? And in this case, is it... Do you know whether or not it's being used to cover service or equipment? Ms... I'm sorry, Ms. Outlaw.
Well, no, we cannot generate money to...
In excess of services, is that what you're asking?
Yes, right, in excess of services.
We cannot generate money in excess of operations, services that we are providing.
So, under this proposal, I made a quick look at this, again, right before the meeting, but it appears to me that this proposal is not for certain... The increase will be used for equipment and not for services.
It'll be used of...
Ms. Outlaw? My question is, Outlaw?
It's going to be used for equipment. You have it in your equipment line item?
It will be going to my equipment line item.
Okay. But, okay, so that'll be permissible to do. So, I just want to make sure, but if we're going to use it for the excess money for services, Ms. Outlaw, based on your experience, we couldn't do it then. But, since we're going to do it for equipment, we'll be fine.
No, if it was going to be used for something other than operations...
Right. Right. We could not do it.
We couldn't. Right.
Right. Okay. I just want to be clear. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion on Alderman Sistruck's motion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll now move into a vote on Alderman Sistruck's motion, which is to adopt the amendment to the... to the resolution, which sets out sanitation rates, and that is authorized by ordinance 2008-1. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Parker?
Yea.
Alderman Cory?
Yea.
Alderman Davis?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
Alderman Sistruck?
Yea.
By a vote, four in favor with two against, this measure passes.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. And we'll give Alderman Cory a moment to reenter the room. Item E has been postponed until Tuesday night. Item D... It's going on for a sec. That concludes our board business. And that will take us to public services. And we have a presentation from Mr. Devlin regarding the extension of services for fire hydrants and sewer services into the 1998 annex area. And just a quick introduction, Mr. Devlin, along with Ms. Spruill, have been working very, very hard on getting the details of this proposal together over the last year. And y'all have done an excellent job. And now, it's time for the board to begin to offer some direction as to how we want to proceed extending services to the portion of the 1998 annex area that is not fully served. Mr. Devlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'm going to cover is the fire hydrants. This was an initiative that was started on the term of the last board, if you remember, Mr. Cory. We felt that life safety was of primary importance, and we felt like we had to move at all due speed to make sure that our fire department had the proper sized line of fire hydrants to fight fires in the annex area. to fight fires in the annex area. And I'll just give you just kind of a quick update on that. This, what you see outlined here in the, in the blue is the remaining part of the 1998 annex areas that presently do not have fire protection. This is in northeast Starkville. Includes the Rock Hill community up to Butler Road, Stowood Road, south of Rock Hill Road, Con Road, Jesse Road, Fanning Dell, and on down to Roundhouse Road. And then there's some, some areas over in the east around the new Highway 12 interchange that presently doesn't have it as well. We've estimated that the cost to complete installation of these lines would be $635,000. And what we did in the enterprise fund budget, we included this project in, in that budget. So if you approve the budget, then that, that project is included in that budget. Okay, sewer extensions. Fire extension is a fairly easy thing to do from a, from a public standpoint, from a citizen standpoint, because it really doesn't involve any inconvenience or expense on their part. Sewer is somewhat of a different story. We have an ordinance in place that says once we get sewer service to your property within 90 days at your expense, you have to connect to the sewer service and then fill your septic tank and close it. The majority of the household served on the survey that Lynn did are low to moderate income people. And quite frankly, it's going to be a pretty big financial hardship on these individuals to, to connect. So that's something, you know, I want to, want to bring all this to light so as we're making decisions going forward, we know what the implications are going to be. I contacted Phyllis Benson over at the GCPD and she's looking in to see if there are some grant funds available to assist the low to moderate income families with...
Mr. Devlin, let's stop if we can. If, if we spend this money and they can't tie into the city's sewer extensions, what are the average costs of a tie into a sewer extension?
Well, first thing you're going to have to do is pay us a tap fee of $200. And you're going to have to hire a plumber to run a service line. So, you know, whatever the cost of materials and labor, pay a plumber to do that.
Most, most of these lines are probably going out the back of their houses to the front, aren't they? So they're going to have to go all the way...
Yeah.
All the way around to follow.
That's right. So it's just, to, to a lot of the people we're trying to serve, these families who are low to moderate income, it's, it's going to create a big hardship.
Could you ballpark it? $500, $1,000, $5,000?
I'd just rather not, you know. It, all I can say to a low to moderate income family, it's going to be a hardship, for sure. We're down about it. The reason the Rock Hill project, to me, in my opinion, was so successful is because there were federal funds involved and the federal funds had grant funds set aside to set up the service connections to the low to moderate income families. And that was a very, I consider it a very successful project. It didn't create a big hardship or inconvenience and I think that the community is really, really thriving now because of this project. And if we, if we go into an area without the federal funding, a portion of it, and don't have the ability to get, and I don't know if state law allows us to do it with the impermissible donation statutes, but I don't know if without federal funding there would be a way to help provide the assistance we need to, to hook these families up. So it's just something that, you know, I just want to make sure we're, we're getting all the issues out on the table.
Alderman Vaughn?
That's the purpose you, you get with Ms. Benson for this grant?
Sir?
I said, that's the purpose you get with Ms. Benson for this grant?
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, because if, if we move into an area and there's, there's no CDBG or ARC funds available to fund even a part of the project, and if we use, say, SRF funds or self-finance or, you know, use a capital loan or some other form of financing, then that piece is not available to help these low to moderate income families connect to the, to the sewer line. So I asked Phyllis, is there any grant or we could apply for a grant, even if we don't get any other federal funding for the bricks and mortar of the project, to at least provide assistance to these low to moderate income families to, to get connected to the, to the sewer system? And she's, she's working on that now. Thank you. Okay, and then the other challenge we're going to have is we have an ordinance that I, that I mentioned before. And there are going to be some people on this list that we're going to bring the sewer to their house. We're going to compel them to connect with the ordinance and they're going to have perfectly functioning septic tanks. And they're going to wonder why we're forcing them to connect when they're perfectly happy with what they have. So that's a consideration to consider as well. So these are the political kind of things that y'all are going to have to think about and deal with as, you know, if we do decide to go forward, we need to, need to make sure we give careful thought to these two, these two issues.
Do we, when we bring it to... The sewer line has to touch a portion of their land? Is that, or?
The ordinance says within 100 feet.
100 feet of the house?
Well, within 100 feet of the property, I'm thinking.
Property line? So if their way, I mean, if their way, if they had 10 acres and their way in the back, they would actually have to...
According to the ordinance.
Some of the houses on Bluefield, that would be quite a distance back.
Yeah, according to the ordinance. The way it's written now, you know. Okay, these are the...
Mr. Devlin?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, can you go back to that one?
Sure.
You have easements down there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and construction?
I'm sorry.
Is that also something that is a, that, that people would need to expect? There'd be some disruption because of construction?
You wanted to go back to the previous one?
Well, just, if you could just talk about, about what kind of disruption construction of these lines will cause in a neighborhood?
Well, the reason, I'm glad you reminded me because I'd forgot about this bullet point. But the reason I mentioned easements is because I've found out over the years that with any kind of project like this, the most time-consuming aspect of the project is the property acquisition portion of it. Y'all gave me some help with Michelle a while back and now that process is starting to, starting to roll again. But, you know, we, I would say our success rate in getting voluntary easements is 90%, but there are going to be situations where we're going to have to exercise our rights of eminent domain and that's a political issue, you know, that we have to consider as well. And then construction, you know, if you're going through a, an area that's wooded, you know, we typically use a 25-foot, clear 25-foot path for the construction. And then the permanent easement is, is 10-foot wide on either side of the, of the underground pipe. Okay, these are the, the areas we've identified in the 1998 annex areas and their probable cause. And I sorted this list by the, the highest number of residences that the, the project will serve. So I put this in your, in your packet. You should have hard copies of these, of these slides so you may want to, you know, study that bit. But at the top of the list is a project to serve Bluefield Road, Gretel Lane, and the areas of the commercially zoned areas of Highway 25 that where we currently are unable to provide service if someone were to ask for it. Internal funding, you know, from, we have some cash reserves where we can fund some of these, some of these projects and we've included three of the projects in next year's, or this year's budgets. I'm sorry. First one is on the east side of Highway 25, across from the Deerfield subdivision. You'll see a, I think it's a little trailer park and several homes, you know, scattered about in that area. It's a $148,000 project that'll serve 23 households. So that's a good, you know, for the money, you're, you're, you're really getting a lot of tax or your buck. So that's a, it's a relatively low-cost project that serves a lot of people. So we've included that in, in the budget for this year. The next project we have in the budget is the Babylon Road, West Reed Road area. If y'all are familiar with that area, when you go down to Babylon Road and head south, there's several residences down there that don't have sewer and there has been some interest from some of the residents on that road to, to get city, city sewer.
How did you find your priority on these? Just, how did you prioritize them?
Because they were, they were in that, when we sorted that list by the number of customers, these three projects fit in with the remaining cash balance we had.
Okay.
Without, you know, we could actually include these projects in the budget without going to external funding. We could, we could earn, internally fund these projects. And, you know, we, we're trying to hit the ones where we're getting the most, most households of the project. Okay, the total investment on these three projects is about $1.1 million. And again, we, this is included in, in the 2011 enterprise budget for this coming year.
Is this, are all these, do we contract this out? Do we take bids on this or is this something we do as a department?
We, we take annual source of supply bids. We supply the materials, you know, bid that out and then we use local contract to put it in from our source of supply bid.
Does Suddeth Road, Highway 389 north, does that include, I'm thinking where Suddeth, I know where Suddeth Road is. What about that area of Fire Station Road? Where we've had so many conversations in here on 389?
That project's already been approved and...
Okay, so that, that area's moving forward, okay.
Then you...
But, no, the... The first one care, the...
Yeah, Florida Care hadn't been approved. The new development had been previously.
Yeah, we approved for the Fire Station Road Business Park.
Right. But that didn't, still didn't touch Florida Care?
Yeah, it did.
It did?
Yeah. It's right next to Florida Care.
It is?
So they'll be able to connect.
To, through that tap of that fire station?
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
Butler Stowood at $689,000. Is it just the physical location there that caused that one to bump up on the list as opposed to hitting several of these less expensive ones down the list?
Yeah, it's a, we got to bring pipeline a long way. We got to go under the 82 bypass. It's a, it's a no-access right-of-way, which means you got to board from boundary to boundary. That's expensive.
But I guess what I'm asking is, for that $689,000, we could have done four or five of these others, 17...
Well, example, I've got the next three under that were Pincrest, Lewis Lane, and Con Drive for $477,000. You can do 24 houses. And if there is a priority, that's, that's fine, but you can do, for roughly $200,000 less, you can do 11 more homes. So if these are prioritized for a reason...
Right, I mean, if there's something about the physical location or...
It's real scientific.
Is it?
Just those three have to fit exactly with the, with the remaining funds we had and leave a half a million dollar ending cash balance. They can be, you know, they can be switched around at your will. I just want to make sure they're in the budget.
Okay, okay, great.
Now, one thing, this, this project on Stowood Road, I, I need to mention is there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of interest for developers in that area over the last couple of years. And, you know, one of the first things they ask is, is sewer available?
Where's Stowood?
You go out on West Point Road and then when you cross under the bypass, take that left right before the church. Follow it up, kind of weaves around. I can show you exactly. If I could go back to that slide. I go back to the fire hydrant slide.
It's that road we rode, we rode on.
That was the, that was the boundary line?
See right here where the pressure is? It's the one that kind of goes like that. Part of it's outside the city limits and this part right here is, up to Butler Road is inside the city. Okay, so... Okay, now, we're getting into that, that project that serves the most households, but we're going to have to go to external funding on this project and we're going to have to, you know, we can't self-finance this project because of the magnitude of it. It's a $1.5 million project. It, it's, it's going to serve a pretty big, big need that we, an opportunity that we don't have as, as well as, you know, serving the existing folks is... If a developer were to come and ask for sewer service on that parcel, that last parcel on the west side and the south just inside the city limits, we don't, we wouldn't be able to provide, quite simply. So, you know, this, this, this project, in addition to the 33 existing household, has, you know, a lot of commercial development potential associated with it as well. So anyway, there's, according to Ms. Spruill's count, we got 33 households in this area who would, who would get sewer service. And, and this one's going to involve building a pumping station. You know, that's, that's what drives the cost up so high. We, you know, there's really no place to connect to a gravity system in the southwest part of town, so we're going to have to pump it back up north and then into a, into a gravity system by the airport.
Is there any, and, and I'm not going to ask you to give, give me these numbers tonight, but could you look if you segregated Gretel Lane from Bluefield or if you, if you broke it into the three blocks there, a cost for Gretel Lane, a cost for Bluefield, and a cost for that swath at the bottom, I guess?
To get all of those, we're going to have to have that pumping station. So that, that would be included.
Any one of them, if you were just doing Gretel Lane, would you still have to have a pumping station?
I could give you some history.
Okay. We'll do that later, okay.
I'll be happy to. If you're here, they can connect me, correct me if I'm wrong, but I could give you some history. When I first started working for the city, I was told that the only thing we needed to do to get sewer service to everyone in Gretel Lane was to extend a existing sewer main all the way down with gravity feed to the north.
Okay.
Relatively inexpensive, simple project. You know, that we could have done a long time ago. Got, the residents and I worked very hard. They worked harder than me getting easements. A lot of out of town, you know, deed holders and we worked very hard. I was so excited, I went to Mayor's Rutledge's office. I said, "All right, how do I, you know, how do I get the approval to go ahead and put this in?" He said, "Oh, you didn't know about the airport?" In Gretel Lane? And I said, "No, I didn't know about it." And he said, "The road, Gretel Lane itself, is, is on airport property. It doesn't belong to the city." And at the time was, you know, as, as they worked through this, you may put in something that you would have to abandon fairly shortly. So that's, that caused a delay. As time went on, it was obvious nothing was going to happen. No decision was going to be made. We decided to go ahead and go on with the project, put the gravity line in. I sent my guys out to shoot grades and elevations and turns out that the, the point of connection to the gravity sewer line up close to Highway 12 was so shallow that by the time we started running south, we would run out of grade by the time we reached the first house. This was a surprise to me as well. Because that wasn't what I was told. This was a surprise to me as well, because that wasn't what I was told. So then, now we're back to, you know, how do we serve those houses? It's going to take a pumping station. There is a casing that's put under the highway to serve the commercial areas of the new bypass. Yeah, there was a casing put under the road to, because this is all zone commercial on the east side to serve those. So what we're going to have to do now is we're going to have to redo the easements, move them to the west side of the homes so we can make a gravity feed from the homes to that casing crossing the highway. So it's just kind of like starting over. I didn't mean to get into a long, drawn-out deal, but I think the history of Greta Lane is important because there's nobody who's wanted to bring sewer to the residents down there more than me. And, you know, but anyway, here we are.
Okay.
Okay, for this project, there are several funding options we can look at. There's a good percent, high percentage of low to moderate income beneficiaries, so, you know, the possibility of getting federal grants such as ARC, which is a non-matching grant, or CDVG matching grant funds is, the potential is there to apply for these funds and have strong consideration. There's no guarantee, of course, but with the number of low to moderate income beneficiaries, it's a possibility. Now, this would be the ideal situation. In another scenario, because the funding will be available to hook the low to moderate income families up to the sewer line, it wouldn't create a financial hardship for the low to moderate income family who would benefit from this project. So that would be the two most desirable external funding scenarios. If those don't pan out, you know, there's other ways we can get money. Typically, when our, the enterprise fund is audited at the end of every fiscal year, we realize a gain in our ending cash from the prior year, which is the beginning cash. So after that audit, we should have funds, discretionary funds available that we can get back together and, you know, decide, you know, if we want to put those towards these projects. The other option is work with SED and look at ways we can speed up our accounts receivable. We carry, I think at the last audit, we had maybe 60 days or, might have been longer than that, of receivables. We could speed that up to 45 days, you know, which is doable. You know, we can pick up a lot of, we can free up a lot of cash for these projects. So there's another desirable, I'm kind of listing in order of desirability. Now, the next one, if we have to go the lone route, is MVA cap loan. If you got to borrow money, this is the way I like to borrow money. The loans have basically no origination fees at all. Last one we got was a one and a half million dollar loan and the only fee we had to pay on the front end was the MVA attorney $400, just to review the paperwork. And then it's very flexible, you can, you can put the project in any way you want, you don't have all these rules, you know, you got to use engineers, you got to use these people and that people. And you can usually get the project done for about 40% less than if you go the other route, which is SRF. Low interest, but a lot of fees and a lot of rules where it's going to make the project possible. Okay, so, decisions we need to make for the next year, and we talked about projects, possible projects for this year, moving on to next year, we need to start thinking about a couple of things. Of that list, with the exception of Sand Road, most of the beneficiaries are not going to be low to moderate, so when we get the sewer line there, they're going to have to pay the money to hook up, so, you know, it'd be good to know how they're going to feel about that if we do it. And Sand Road is predominantly low to moderate income, but the dwellings reside on at least 16 section land and, of course, you know, there's no guarantee that those customers will be there, you know, if the school district decides they want to do something different with the land. So something we need to think about, just from a strategic standpoint. By the end of this year, Michelle and I plan to have all the easements in hand, either through Quick Take or voluntary easements, the end of this year. Phase one is to run the line from the east side of 389, north of 82, up through Ducey Road, North Rock Hill Road on the west side, to Butler Road, over to the Luther Hunter property, and then a loop connection through Treasure Lane connecting back in at Butler Road at the Luther Hunter property. The second phase is coming south from that project, which will provide fire protection Jesse, Jesse Road, Fanny Dell Road, Con Lane, South Rock Hill Road, Roundhouse Road, I don't know if I heard that, Roundhouse Road, and then down Pat Station Road extended, tying back in over by the Hilton Inn. And that one, we would like to finish by March of next year, 2011. Phase three is the final piece of the project. It involves Collier Road, Revander Butler Road from the Luther Hunter property east to Stowood Road, south on Stowood Road and tying into our line on Old West Point Road. And that would be the end of our projects to get fire protection into these areas. Okay, these are, assuming we go with the projects we have in our budget, the way they're listing, of course, that's subject to change if y'all want to go a different direction. We would like to, on the east side of Highway 25, you know, that was a quicky project that's going to serve a lot of people, we want to have the easements by the end of this year and have that project completed by June of next year. Babylon Road, West Reed Road, we want to have the easements by the end of March next year and then have construction completed by the 30th of September of next year. Bluefield Road, Greta Lane, we'd like to have the easements in hand by the end of March of next year and then construction complete by, you know, a lot of that is dependent on the timing of getting approval for the funding, so that's, that's the critical path on those projects, is the funding piece of it. Butler Stowood Road area, if we do that project, want to have the easements by mid-year next year and then we'd like to have the construction done by the end of, end of the year, next Okay, so just kind of in a summary, some decisions, you know, we're looking at. Like I say, if we just go with the projects we're looking at, you know, with what our projected ending cash balance is, no rate adjustment is required this year. Going to the next year, and this is a kind of a pessimistic approach, assuming we get no grant funds, assuming we don't pick up any other kind of windfalls in our cash balance and had to borrow money, 4% interest for 20 years, that would equate to a dollar and 85 per month rate increase for all our sewer customers. And like I say, you know, these, no decisions have to be made tonight, you know, we've got a lot to think about, but as, you know, once we get some direction on what to do, then as we start working on these projects, of course, you know, we come to you for approval to purchase materials and hire people and all those things, so. And then, of course, the, you know, if we're going to apply for, you know, grant funds, you know, whatever the deadlines are on those, Phyllis will come, like she always does, and get approval for the city to apply, apply for those funds. I'm thinking that's it. So with this time, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to...
Questions, comments from members of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. Mr. Mayor, do we have anything else to discuss in the next session?
Uh, no, there's nothing pressing that has to be discussed.
May I be recognized?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, will this be standing recessed until 5:30 Tuesday, September 21st, 2010, at 5:30 in this room?
Alden Perkins has made a motion to recess until 5:30 on Tuesday, September 21st at City Hall. Alden Perkins, is that your motion?
That is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alden Ball. Alden Perkins, would you like to speak on the matter?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I would just encourage, if anybody has any questions, comments for Mr. Devlin, it looks like we're probably not going to get to those, please give feedback to me, Doug and Lynn, so we get some direction as to where y'all are comfortable going on this project. Any further discussion? Alden Carver?
You said for Mr. Devlin?
Yeah.
I'd like to possibly see a real re-prioritization of that list. I came up with another list that would serve 31 more residents for the same price of the Butler Stowood Road, so.
And I'd like to see them now.
And we can't go too far on discussing on that issue because we're in discussion on the motion to recess. Any further discussion on the motion to recess? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none? All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye. All who's opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes, we stand in recess.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia Hall County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Hi, I'm Bill Green, executive producer for WOBV Channel 5. In an effort to improve your viewing quality in Starkville, WOBV and MetroCast are undergoing several major changes. Channel 5 will be changing its affiliate in the near future, upgrading our equipment, and begin showing programming created in our own studios. MetroCast has made a major investment in its wiring infrastructure in Starkville and the surrounding area and will be changing its channel lineup. While WOBV and MetroCast are modifying their infrastructure, there may be periods where we are off the air. We ask your forgiveness and patience while we are upgrading our signal and programming in Starkville. If we do go off the air on the cable, please try to dust off your old rabbit ears and tune into us on Channel 5 the old-fashioned way. Thank you for watching WOBV Channel 5, the station in the heart of the city.